Joe. All right, welcome everyone to the Town of Rangelley Warren's Public Hearing with the focus on nonprofits and their requests. Called Hearing to Order and we've got a full board present, therefore a quorum. So we'll start off dive right into the nonprofits and first on the list is Lifelight. Do we have someone? Who is?
Yes ma'am, this is Kate O'Halloran. I'm the Executive Director of the Lifelight Foundation. Can you all see and hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I know I have two minutes, so I will be brief. I'm going to start by saying thank you, thank you, thank you. You have been a wonderfully loyal supporter for Lifelight for the past seven years and we very much appreciate that. Our request this year is $2,000 and it's an exciting year for Lifelight of Maine. Lifelight was founded in 1998 when we were the only state in the country to not have helicopter air rescue service and in the past 25 years we have transported 36,000 patients. So this is our 25th year and we're celebrating. Thanks to the generosity of you and other folks, this year we welcomed our third upgraded helicopter. So those three new helicopters are in service caring for the people of Maine day and night. For those of you who don't know, Lifelight is in fact Maine's only air medical rescue service. We're much more than just helicopters. When we land, we bring the ICU to the patient and our commitment is that everybody in Maine has access to critical care and transport, whether you're on a main street in Yarmouth or a ski trail in Rangelley or an island in Casco Bay. So the foundation raises money for the fleet, having just completed that helicopter fleet, we're actually now going to move in raise some money for some ground trucks. We also raise money for infrastructure, so helipads, runway cameras, weather stations, which is really important for us. We also raise money for medical equipment. Each one of our vehicles has $500,000 in medical equipment because for the people that we transport, Maine's most critically ill and injured, Lifelight is often their only chance. And so we carry everything we need so we can bring the care right to that patient wherever they are. And we also raise money and do a lot of education for our EMS partners around the state. Lifelight can only do what we do in partnership with others and we are very, very grateful. I will tell you that last year our town giving, we raised $124,000 from 194 communities. And that's very important because when we go out and raise money from either individual donors or businesses or foundations, they want to know what we have for town support. So thank you for being part of that and we hope you'll consider doing it again. I also want to say, in our 25 year history, we have transported 104 Rangelley citizens. We transported six last year. And again, we go on a mission on average every three and a half hours. Lifelight is busier than we have ever been. So we're very, very grateful for your support. We run out of bases in Bangor, Lewiston and Sanford and I'm happy to answer any questions if I have any time left. But thank you and we hope you consider it. We know you have hard choices, but we're grateful and thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions for Lifelight? So you've got the three new helicopters and you've got one fixed wing, is that correct?
So right, we have the three new helicopters, we have one fixed wing and then we have some rapid response vehicles which are great in that they bring the equipment and the crew to the patient, but they don't actually fit a patient. So what we'll be working on now is some critical care transport trucks that allow us to go in bad weather and put the patient and care for them. So it has everything that the helicopter and the plane have, but in a in a truck. And so we're now raising money for that as well.
Makes sense.
Because weather is complicated. 25% of our transports are actually happening by ground and the weather's getting more and more complicated and we need to be able to get to people regardless of the weather and where they are.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Lifelight? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna head on out unless you need me.
You're good to go.
Thank you. Have a good night everybody and thank you for your service and all that you do.
Okay. Next up, the Rangelley Region Cross Country Ski Club.
Yeah, my name is Doug Lynn and I'm the president of the club. And we, over the years, have really appreciated the support of Rangelley as well as the surrounding plantations to help us with our operations and maintenance. We're up on the flank of Saddleback Mountain off the mountain road and we maintain 55 kilometer, 30 miles. And we have a lot of different programs we run. We have the Tuesday Ski Program for kids that don't want to go up to the mountain. Snowshoe and the Cross Country Ski and do all those fun things. We have three, we have the Public Art. The Gnome Home Room, that's collaboration between RLR Fest is the art department and center. And it's a fun exercise and adventure for kids and they have a map that they follow and try to get to all the gnomes and we also have three major events that we have up there. We have the fat bike lopit in the winter, we have ski lopit in the winter and we also have the mustache. So this year is our second year of working on our track and the trail initiative, which is going to make us a year-round destination. We are building bike trails within our Nordic ski trails and last year we gave it a good start and this year we're going to finish up and bring more people to our venue year round. So I really appreciate the support in the past and hopefully this year we'll get support as well from the town. Thank you.
Questions? Ski Club's request is $9,600 and it's been consistent for the past few years, that same amount.
Yes.
Any questions on Zoom, joking or Rebecca? I don't see any. Okay. Thank you, Beth. Next up, we've got the Rangelley Lakes Heritage Trust Water Quality Protection and invasive plant program.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Amanda LaLiberty, the Program and Communications Director for the Rangelley Lakes Heritage Trust. Again, this year we've asked the voters of Rangelley to raise $14,000 for our Headwaters Lake Protection Program. I believe this is the 25th or 26th season of the program of conducting water quality within the Rangelley Lakes region. We also asked for funding for this program from the voters of Dallas, Sandy River and Rangelley Plantations, along with the State of Maine Department of Environmental Protection and a lot of individual donations. The Headwaters Lake Protection Program has three main parts. It's courtesy boat inspectors, water quality monitors and invasive plant patrollers. Our boat inspectors, which are the most public and visible part of our program, inspected about 2,400 boats last year and they found 59 plants. This, the boat traffic was down last year, the year before we looked over about 3,200 boats and we found six plants. So it was certainly concerning to pull 59 off last year. We do staff our launches, the public boat launches at the busiest times and really train our ambassadors to be more than just boat inspectors, but to welcome folks to the Rangelley Lakes region. Water quality monitors looked after 13 bodies of water for clarity, dissolved oxygen and total phosphorus in 2022 and then invasive plant patrollers stewarded 13 bodies of water. They hit an all-time record of 95 miles of shoreline patrolled and they found no invasive species. Our volunteer hours for 2022 were 338. We figured that was just over $10,000 in match with the value of volunteer time. So we have every reason to believe that will continue into this upcoming season. So thank you all for your time this evening and I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Amanda? Looks like you're, no questions, so you did good.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Great. We have Rangelley Family Medicine with a request for $1,500. All right, going once. All right, Rangelley Family Medicine, $1,500. Next request is from the Main Forestry Museum for $2,800. Thanks, Mike. Honorary, honorary. All right. No one present for, from the Main Forestry Museum. Rangelley Lakes Snowmobile Club.
My name is Michael Coop from Aclastic. I don't know really what to say other than just totally right at the epic. And I think we do a lot for the town and the region. Our budget this year actually was a lot compared to years past.
360.
Which is 100 more than it's ever been, but we wanted to smooth this nicest trail system that Maine has ever seen and I think we got that, which showed in the hotels, the restaurants, the other things. So our new president Lee is doing a fabulous job and got here tonight.
He's actually acting president tonight.
Okay.
But I just think Snowmobile is still an epic part of the community, so I'd like to see the support from the town.
Yep, the request is for 50,000.
Yes.
Which has been consistent for 10, 12 years.
We dropped it 10 exactly when we didn't need it.
That's right.
Everybody needed to pull back a little bit.
Right.
But we upped it and we raised our fundraising and had a lot of good, and we got our 501(c)(1), which made a huge difference and helped us. If that continues, we can maybe drop with the town, but at the moment, it's only one year into that, which is a learning curve. That was doing well and still strong. We have a huge team of volunteers that runs it, so I think it's doing good. I think it's a great asset. I mean, I hate to see it ever gone. Thank you.
So the 360,000, the increase was just due to the the extra manpower, the extra cost with fuel for the
Yeah, and fuel and time is just not what it used to be a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Costs a lot more.
Compared to rumor drivers very well.
Yeah, definitely. Any questions for the Snowmobile Club? No.
You've got a nice complete
We got, we got
We have an auction on Saturday night.
What do you hope for the fundraiser to bring in for money?
We normally bring anywhere between 40 and 60,000.
Wow.
So
It's kind of been about $10,000 increase every year that we do the auction. So Sam has graciously allowed us to do it there this year, so
Thank you.
We're hoping for a huge turnout.
And we have the Chillicothe Chopper at Saddleback and then we have the Hill Plant at Saddleback, which already sold out, sold out the first two weeks of entries, so that will be an epic event.
That was new last year, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And then your pig roast made
Well, yes.
Tim and Donna just knocked That was double this year.
Yeah, that's what
The weather though, was it?
Right.
10 below the
And the slope wasn't really like sending kids
Well, you know, it's just nice to hear about, you know, organizations fundraising events as well, your efforts and, you know, raising your own money and
Every weekend there's something that we try to do that's a little bit
We've got a lot of new board members, a lot of people that are second homeowners here that aren't here full-time, but when reading, caring are here. Reads on the board with us. Just a lot of new blood, if you will, on the on the board and they're they're pretty solid and, you know, I didn't want to do this many fundraisers, Lisa, can we cut the fundraising down? I'm like, sure, and it's gone. You know, we need it.
Next year. Thank you so much. Any other questions for the Snowmobile Club? All right, awesome. Thank you, you know, for everyone that that's that's here and is zooming in. People have the opportunity to watch this afterwards, you know, and if they can't be here in person, so, you know, they'll be able to listen to the questions asked and hear about the responses. Mark?
On the municipal donation section of the there's just two plantations, there's Dallas and Army. Did they not contribute or were they not asked?
I I have to look at our bookkeeping, but one of them did not contribute to us last year.
But they were asked, do you believe? And that amount that Sandy River Plantation gave, the $467,000, is that what you requested?
No, I believe it's 5,000.
Or did they cut down?
2,500.
25,000.
So you asked them 2,500 and they gave you 400 and so
Unfortunately.
You're still roaming in San Diego.
Only Our trails are our trails.
If it's an ITAS trail, we have to go up to the state.
Okay.
If it's a club trail, we don't have to move. If it's an ITAS trail, we have to go up to the state to get our money.
Any other questions for the Snowmobile Club? All right, thank you. Next up is the Chamber of Commerce. They have a request for 50,000.
I'm gonna stand so you can see.
Thank you, Amanda.
I'm gonna read so I can be within two minutes.
Fine.
The Rangelley Lakes Region Chamber of Commerce mission is to market the Rangelley region and promote tourism, economic development, homeownership to support and grow the whole economy. Our standard town appropriation asked with taxpayers in the town of Rangelley is 50,000. We also asked Dallas, Rangelley and Sandy River Plantations 50,000, so comparable to their population in their area. This money is used to promote the region along with local events, things being held at the Trail Center, Snowmobile Club. So, yeah, don't do a lot of this out back. They do enough of their own.
Right.
But we do help a lot of the nonprofits promoting their events. Of course, the Chamber puts on their events, also trying to do some fundraising. Hard to do fundraising when you have an event where anyone can access from any vantage point. But it does bring people into town. We hope, like White Nose Pete's Bike Festival that's coming up in June. Last year our advertising spend was $60,046. This year our advertising budget is 67,463. And a lot of that is associated with printing costs. You know, the Rangelley Visitors Guide and we did the who, what, where, when. Printing up stuff for events and whatnot. We're cutting a lot and for print advertising, we're cutting a lot back on the print. We'll still do the visitors guide. We've done away with the who, what, where, when. And turning our focus more over to digital. Me a lot on social media, YouTube, because that's where our target market is. But, or I should say, and the challenge with that is we can't use pictures because we don't capture their attention. So we are working with Notion Media to capture the remaining of winter to come up with some really short, really sweet clips that we can use in the future to promote the Rangelley region and different events. They are up there for the lopit and the mustache and they've been all over the place for us. We've also agreed to share that with like the Trail Center, you know, the footage that goes with them and also with Saddleback. And we're trying to put up so we, not one person holds all the goodies. So, yeah, going back to print costs, they about doubled since last year. And so we've cut back on volume and we've cut back on what we print and what we pay to print to advertise in magazines. We've cut that back. We did advertise in Snowmobile. We are advertising in Ride Maine, that's for bikers. And we're being very selective about that, but our focus is more on digital. And digital also includes our website. And we're trying to raise some funds to help kind of overhaul that because a lot of good information on the website. But it doesn't hold people's attention because they have to scroll, click and all that. It needs to be simplified. That's just the revolution of websites. So anyway, the focus of our marketing strategy going forward is those bite-sized chunks, using those on the website, using them in social media, doing advertisement in social media. And when I say social media, I'm talking about not only the Facebook or Instagram, but YouTube, possibly Pinterest. Because Pinterest is really exploding in that area. And I just want to remind everyone that tourism is really the lifeblood of this town. And as we learned in the past, we, you guys, I wasn't here then, but you guys rallied with snowmobile and everything else with the mountain clothes. We can't just depend on one entity, one season, one sport to sustain us and we need to keep moving forward as a four-season, multi-sport location. And that's where the Chamber comes into focus. This, we package it all and ship it out. Any questions?
Very, yes, very comprehensive. Yes, Mark.
In your list of goals, there's one of the things you mentioned was homeownership. What is the Chamber on those?
Primarily it's I'm still newish.
Okay.
I haven't been there a year. So my understanding is by attracting visitors here and becoming second homeowners or coming here and permanently settle, maybe hopefully opening up a business or but it's bringing people here so that they see the region, fall in love with the region and want to stay.
So to promote real estate sales of homes?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Amanda? I don't see anyone in Zoom either. Thank you very much. We've got, next up is the Rangelley Library Association and the amount of their request is $44,581.
Good evening, this is Barbara Burgess, the treasurer for the library. Yes, the request is 44,581. It's the same amount requested last year. We are requesting funds from the plantations. We're requesting 11,194 from Dallas, 11,301 from Rangelley Plantation and 7,188 from Sandy River Plantation. And I'm pleased to report that Rangelley Plantation approved the requested amount at their recent town meeting. The total municipal request is 74,264, which is only 39% out of the library's operating budget of 188,405. Janet Wilson, our library director, is doing an awesome job of running programs year-round. Books are as popular as ever and interestingly, you know, we have the new fast internet, the library has fast internet, but we're finding that people not only want fast internet, but they want a space to be able to work. So Jan is looking at some possible grants in that area. And that's pretty much it. Library is free and open to everybody and brings a lot to the town. So any questions?
So Barbara, do you still find that the library fundraiser is, I mean, just given, you know, the media and whatnot, that it's still a popular popular or in-demand fundraising project?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what your question is Cindy.
So is it the library book, the library phone book that you do every year?
Yes.
Years, yeah. So is that something that's still, you know, that you, the library seems to still see a significant, you know, income from, given the mobile paper?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, when we contact businesses, and interestingly, some of the younger business owners who are all over social media, they can't say enough positive about being in the phone book. So that's just kind of interesting and it's a harder sell, you know, to folks in Farmington because people say, oh, phone books, that's old school and we have to explain, no, you don't quite understand. It's it's Rangelley, it's just Rangelley. We, yeah. So, yeah, the library, the the phone book is still a good fundraiser and people are buying it. We are, we are looking into how better, just how to better distribute it because you know, the IGA has always been the biggest source of sales, but as you know, they've gone to primarily self-checkout. So we really have to look at how we can barcode that book and make it so that people can buy it at the self-checkouts. So that's a little bit of a recent twist for us.
Yeah, who would have thought? That's interesting.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions for Barbara and the, in the library? All right. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you guys do.
You're very welcome. Next up, we've got requests from the Rangelley Region Health and Wellness Partnership for $9,180. There are actually two requests. That's the first one. Anyone from Rangelley Region Health and Wellness? And both requests were submitted by by Janice Walker, again, the same entity. The second request is for $10,000 to support a behavioral health coordinator. Going once. Going twice. Okay, Safe Voices.
Hi, everybody. I am here.
All right.
Hi, thank you. My name is Emily Mitchell and I am the Development Operations Coordinator at Safe Voices. Safe Voices is the only domestic violence resource center that serves Andrew Scoggan, Franklin and Oxford Counties. And we are requesting $500 this year. It's the same amount that we requested last year. The town of Rangelley has not funded us since 2014, so we're hopeful that this year that will change. And we request funding from all municipalities across the three counties that we serve. Safe Voices, we serve survivors of domestic violence and sex trafficking through a variety of ways. The first would be our 24-hour, 365-day-a-year helpline where survivors and service providers can call us to get advice and help with filing protection orders. And we also provide courtroom advocacy for survivors in civil matters and in criminal cases. We support them with filing protection from abuse orders, protection from harassment orders, and we are present in the courtroom at all domestic violence-related criminal cases. Aside from that, we also operate three shelters. The first two are at confidential locations, but one is a 17-bed emergency domestic violence shelter and the second is a six-bed safe house for survivors of sex trafficking. And brand new this year, we are about to open our third shelter right in Franklin County where it is desperately needed. April 3rd, that will open and we are really looking forward to being able to serve more survivors out that way. We also operate three administrative offices, one in Lewiston, one in Farmington and one in Rumford. And while I cannot share the town-specific numbers of survivors that we serve due to confidentiality, I can share our overall numbers. We've seen a 400-person increase from last year to this year in the amount of people seeking our services. We served over 22 We served over twenty two hundred people in the last fiscal year. And about half of those were specifically in the courtroom doing civil or criminal cases, so about eleven hundred people throughout the court system. We provided shelter to ninety nine people, seventy five adults and twenty four children between two of our shelters, since our third one is about to open. And so we're hoping that those numbers will increase as we, um, greater our footprint over in Franklin County. And in total, we provided sixteen thousand hours of advocacy to survivors of domestic violence and sex trafficking in the last year. We've seen those numbers increase steadily over the last ten years. Um, so we are hopeful that the town of Rangey will choose to support us and the work that we do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Yes, Rebecca.
The citizens actually did support them last year. We sent a check.
Okay.
Oh, did you say this week?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We haven't gotten it yet, but thank you so much, so much.
Any questions for Emily and Safe Voices? Very thorough explanation, Emily. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a nice day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. All right, we've got, uh, next up, Rangey Friends of the Arts and their request for ten thousand dollars.
Hello.
Hi, Val.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, so, um, we're asking for the same amount we've asked for the past several years, ten thousand dollars to support the after school program. Which is free to any student that wants to come, uh, grades five through nine this year. And, uh, previously it was for grades five through twelve and. That age range was getting somewhat difficult and so we decided to focus on the young core hard as the older. Kids do have something else to do. They can go to work. They can do various things. So, um. And last year, our, I think we had about nine students registered, which was probably the lowest year. Um, this year we have seventeen students registered. They don't all come all the time. Obviously, sometimes they're at various sports or other activities. But there are seventeen students that are registered this year, which is the highest ever. And we have. Two parts to it. We have, uh, the art teacher part, which we're doing this year is only two days a week. Um, instead of five days, because we were unable to over the past two years, hire anybody. Just nobody applies. And when they do, they then decide not to do it because it's too far to drive or whatever. Um, so we haven't been able to get a full five day a week after school coordinator. Um, so what we did this year, last spring, we tried it out and it worked. So this year we're doing it is, uh, Sonia Johnson, who's the school art teacher. Has Sojo's Maker Space right next door. And so she, two days a week, takes the students, um, for two hours each time and does a real. Art focused activity. And that's working out really good. The kids are loving it, which I think is, you know, evidenced in the fact that so many students are registered. Um, and the other part is, uh, the music program, a free band program, which, uh. Was on hiatus because our teacher had injured himself quite severely, but he came back in January. And, uh, so I think he has three students that he's, uh. Started doing, uh, group music lessons again. Um. And, uh, we do ask all the other plantation, all the plantations for money, though not ten thousand, we ask. Dallas, Sandy River and Rangey Plantation for fifteen hundred dollars each. And Dallas and Rangey Plantation usually, uh. Pay and Sandy River never does. Um. And any questions?
Any questions for Val? Sounds like, it sounds like you guys are busy.
Yes.
Questions for Val regarding the Raising Friends of the Arts. Programs, so requests for ten thousand. Alright, looks like you're all set, Val. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have the American Red Cross. Up next and their request is one thousand dollars. I thought I saw them on there too.
I think it's a great thing.
Thank you. I think, I think, I think the. Some of their two minutes.
They were on there.
I thought so, Amanda. Okay. Well, if they happen to pop back on, um. We'll revisit that. Do you, do you want to, do you want to?
I was thinking about it. I heard it's.
So fun. Alright, Main Public Radio is up next, uh, for one hundred dollars, their request. You went for Main Public Radio. Awasik ATV Club, their request is for two thousand dollars. Michael. Awasik ATV Club, two thousand dollar request. Tri County Mental Health Services. Has a request for five hundred dollars.
Hi, that's me. So, um. My name's Leslie Ogilvy. I'm the manager of grants and communications with Tri County Mental Health Services. So we provide, uh, mental health and substance misuse services to central and western Maine. Um, we provide services to Rangey residents typically through our Farmington office location. Um, town funding really ensures that we can continue to keep our Farmington office, um, operating, maintained and adequately staffed. And the funding, um, will benefit Rangey residents who are uninsured or underinsured. And have no other means to pay for their needed services. So that's really how we allocate town funding, um, to make sure that those. Particular residents have the funding that they need to get the services that they need. Um, we're requesting funding in the amount of five hundred dollars and we thank you so much for your past support of Tri County. I'm happy to take any questions.
Alright, any questions for Leslie? Yes, Shelley.
Do you ask the plantations as well, or do you just go after the towns?
So I have asked the plantations. I have not had a response this year. Um, I've only been here a year, so this is kind of my first time doing this sort of, uh, funding request. But, um, I took a look at our, our list and I made sure we hit all of the municipalities and and, um, and did Dallas Plantation and Rangey Plantation. Um, but I, I don't believe that they have funded us in the past, um, unfortunately, and I did not get a response to our funding request application.
Any other questions for Leslie? Tri County Mental Health Services. Alright, Leslie, thank you so much for zooming in. We really appreciate it. The next request is from Rangey Housing Development Corporation in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Submitted by Barry Libby. I don't see anyone who has zoomed in. Okay, thanks Rebecca. Last on the, uh, nonprofit agenda, Rangey Community Radio, Dave McMillan.
Alrighty, so, um, as you know, we're on the air and, uh, a lot of changes this coming year. Since the economic cloud has been lifted up range of saddleback back open. We're reaching out now with a formal underwriter program happening this year, twenty twenty three. So we're trying to engage more businesses that are for sports station. Especially since we ran a deficit last fiscal year. But, uh, so far the program's been, well, we actually got two, uh, grants last year, one from the Davis Family Foundation, one from the Maine Association Broadcasters. And five or two more grants this year and there are a couple of those on the back burner. So we're doing more active fundraising as the station grows. And we're also split up into, uh, some subcommittees. We've started fundraising committee, this community engagement committee, which I just came from a meeting from. There's a broadcast committee who's going to be looking at our schedule, incorporating more locally produced programs, teaching more people how to. Generate their own programs. So it's a new board, the board itself has tripled in size this year. Here's some great new members, uh, someone with some radio background again, finding which is, uh, uh. Russ Murley, Russ Murley is now, sorry about that. It's been a long day for me. I just came from another meeting. And, uh, also Seth, uh, Newcaster at the bank is our treasurer now. And Sean Russell, the school is our tech guy and he's also helping with school engagement. He's got, Trevor's now working with Russ Murley doing sports for the school. And the plans are to get more kids involved in the station. And, uh. We're reaching, of course, we support all the nonprofits because anytime they have an event, we promote it on the air form. Uh, and one event coming up where we were actually actively, uh. Working with a number of nonprofits, the parents' trusts, they're going to be having a birding festival in Manchester. And we're gonna, uh, broadcast from that festival, but also we're bringing the experts, birding experts into the studio. We're gonna have a call and show internal questions about birding, why range is so unique for birding. Circles. And, uh, yeah, rest of the same amount as last year's, but eight percent of our budget. And, uh, we also ask the, uh, plantations two thousand dollars each. So, um. We're trying to spread out the. Oh, the other thing is, we used to, um, do more, we also, uh, from what we, uh, announce meetings. Uh, select meetings, plantation meetings, assesses meetings. And, uh, you know, any kind of, uh, contact that the, uh, this town must have a station that might. Might be able to identify someone at the town government that can be the liaison with the station. We're gonna have actually a full time, a new full time station manager starting in May. Um, just a graduate of, uh, of a, um. It's not a broadcast school, but it's, uh, some sort of, uh. Communications type major and she's gonna be, uh, she worked for us, she works hard time now, but she's physically going to be here starting in May. And she'll be, uh, the full time, uh, kind of a fit person, uh, to, uh, to, uh. Make these connections with various groups, including the town range.
Is it the first time you'll have someone full time, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. That's exciting.
Yeah.
And you still share space with the, um, with the theater, yours?
Studio is still the old theater ticket office. Yeah, back this past year with the grant money from Davis Foundation completely upgraded the studio. And Russell was instrumental because he's got friends, he was in radio before TV. And he's got friends in the business at other stations. He brought him into Rangeley. And they went ahead and revamped, rewired the studio. It's really a class operation now. So it makes it easier to bring people in to do things in the studio.
Wonderful. Any questions for Dave and W R G Y Community Radio? Alright, thank you, Dave. So that is, that is the end of our nonprofits, um, list. And so it will be, you know, the same process that has been from, for years prior. We've got, um. Each nonprofit, uh, will be listed individually on the Rangey Town, um, warrant. And folks will vote yes or no for each individual, uh, nonprofit. And, um. Results are usually posted the next day if. It's a clear, um. If the voting shows a clear decision. So, thank you all very much for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
Yes.
I may say, I think I'm gonna be in tomorrow.
Yes, yeah, I pulled it out. I think it was just accidentally in there. Allegiance, allegiance struck. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got an invoice just happened to be tucked in, you know, the last page of one of the, you know, one of the nonprofits, so.
Just keeping you on.
I didn't think any of them wanted, you know, a thirteen foot stainless steel dump body, you know, in, in, in their request, but. Um, so it's not something we just.
Disregard.
Disregard, disregard. Like Joseph, keep it us on our toes. Do they actually look at all that stuff? So, uh, the other item on the agenda is to review the draft town meeting warrant. It's of course a very rough draft at this point. Um, you know, nonprofits, of course, won't change. Um, but you can see the order, the proposed order, um, really. Nothing much, um, nothing new is different. The business articles are in the same order they always are. On B four, so the eight percent interest is decided for us by the state. Is that correct? Yeah, so there, um, so, you know, nothing, nothing new here. We, you know, we still have the reserves, um, you know, article C one is, you know, the biggest jump and. Selectmen will have, you know, one more, you know, one more meeting or two to finalize the budget as, you know. As, as we are able to, uh, prior to our April fourteenth deadline, Joe.
Marty, if you're listening, can you verify that, please? The next meeting of the board, scheduled meeting of the board is April third.
April third.
Yeah, and then you have a few days before the absolute drop dead.
Okay.
Needs to be sent to the printers. I think it's the night.
Okay, alright, um. Okay. Alright, well. So for, um, yeah, for this, for this selectman to just, um. Review the draft warrant, you know, warrant, it's not, um, not set in stone. Um, the revenue budget article is in yellow because that's, that's all estimated. I think those last year's amounts, Rebecca, that you just kept in there. Yeah. The ordinance articles, um, we have moved chapter thirty eight forward. Um, chapter thirty four still has its public hearing. Actually, I think chapter thirty eight is probably our next, is on our next. We have the hearing, but it'll be on our next agenda for, um, April third. Uh, for chapter thirty four, we have still have the public hearing coming up Monday. Um, and we'll vote whether that is moved forward on to. Twenty twenty three select means warrant. Yes, Shelley.
Moratorium, does that go in that same section?
It would.
It's a good point. So what, um, what Shelley brought up is the, we have a solar moratorium. That's. Will, um, that the selectmen have voted to place on this warrant and that requires. A, uh, an approval by the legislative body, so that will be on the warrant. Selecting on P J.
Yes, um, so another question under article V nine, that is three percent, correct? That's the amount that they're being asked for this year.
So that should, we probably should adjust that. Uh, so because the interest rates. The delinquent, the delinquent tax rate maximum is eight percent, so that the board may decide to go up to eight percent. We recommend eight percent. That's what we plan to do. So the board may decide to go up to 8%. We recommend 8%. That's what we planned to do. Statute says that it can not be less than 4% or it's lower than whatever you set the delinquent tax rate. So it should be, if you're going with 8, the delinquent, it should be 4 on this B9.
Okay, so that should be 4% or higher?
Correct. It can't be any lower than 4%.
Or is the minimum? I think we've always just done the minimum for it, right?
I think so, yeah.
I'm sorry. So also in regards to Article B17, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appropriate, appropriate for, from surplus, a sum not to exceed 25,000 pursuant to the undesignated fund out policy? That doesn't have anything to do with us if we put that money and invest that amount of money that we were talking about investing. So I just want to make sure, okay, that we don't have to make it an article.
Well, you're planning on investing with the reserve money?
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. So the other thing, you had a placeholder for potential ARPA. Yes. I'm sorry. So the amount that's available is 68,621, 61? I just have, I can show you what I have, and you can tell me which one it is.
We believe the balance is closer to, yeah, actually, it says 68,621, 61. That was dated February 23rd. So this is an interesting, it is an interesting account.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of like, so this is one handout I have for the full 122,127.98. And then I had this one that shows that amount minus 53,506,37, and I thought that's what we use for the ARPA forms. Or is that just another premium added? Sorry, that's, it was just confusing. I don't know actually how much.
So Matt, here, the 53,600 change was spent for premium pay as authorized by Town Meeting a year ago.
Yeah.
The balance is the 68,000.
The 68, okay.
And there may be some minimal interest on that. That was a month ago.
Sorry, it was just confusing. I'm like, oh, this is one, this one's saying, okay, so.
Yeah, so that will be another, you know, item we have to vote on as to whether we'll bring anything forth to be spent from ARPA prior to the April 9th deadline.
What's the deadline for expanding those funds again? 2024? Yeah, but what, 2024? I just wanted to make sure that we knew if we were in the fiscal year, we needed to do something about it. If that deadline is in fiscal year, that.
If it's April of 2024.
We gotta know that.
We need to, we even need to have it on this one or on the normal.
Thank you.
Good point. Anything else on the draft, excuse me, warrant as it currently stands? Also handed out with pie charts that show the, excuse me, as the, as the budget currently looks, how the town budget lays out in a pie chart as far as the percentage, and then the town budget with the county and school added. Thank you very much for that. And then we've got the color-coded, we've got the color-coded budgets by department. For review as well, of course, subject to change as real numbers come in for wages or any, anything else that needs shifting. Any questions from the Select Board? I don't see anyone in the audience, so I guess we can go ahead and close the public hearing.